From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
I'm Rick Chandler with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
He's asked to not be re-upped on his appointment for the next term and he actually told me he wouldn't mind standing by as an advisor if the committee needed any advice on matters of zoning, but he doesn't want to be a voting member anymore, so... And Jim used to serve on our zoning board and... Ladies, I want to welcome each one that's here tonight. We have the matter of the public hearing and then we have our chief here tonight and others that have some business with us tonight. So we'll stand together at this time and have our indication of prayers and we'll get right into the meeting. Our Lord and Father, we thank you for such a beautiful day in Hamilton, Alabama. Lord, we thank you for all of the blessings that you send our way. Father, we ask that you be with us tonight as we think about the city's business and, Lord, that we might make the decisions that are warranted and needed for us to continue our city's operation. Lord, we ask you to always be our guest in our meetings. Be with our world crisis, Lord, where we have starving people, we have wars, and we have other matters that are severe unrest here and there. Lord, you're still on the throne and still in charge. We certainly realize that, but we need some guidance in some of the matters that are affecting everybody. Lord, we pray our prayer in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You made me seated. The first item tonight would be our public hearing. Public hearing is held in consideration of the Blacktop Restaurant LLC located at 1717 State Highway 17, Hamilton, Alabama, 35570, has applied for and met all requirements as set forth in the ordinance for the issuance of such license to apply for their restaurant retail liquor license. At this time, anyone present to speak either for or against this application can be heard.
My day.
Just a moment, podium, Joe.
Been going to church about 39, 40 years at Missionary Baptist Church here, right beside that. I've done a little red service, you know, the stadium out there, it says 1,000 feet from the church. Well, Hamilton says 200, am I right?
That's right.
200 and 30, you know? We're 202 feet away from that restaurant. It really improved, we oppose it, you know, being a man of anger. Several years ago, I wouldn't oppose this, you know? And I know these people, you know, think that it's going to bring them more business, Lord, and really it's just not, you know, long as it's not. I hate to tell you that it won't, but it's fact. But anyway, what changed my mind about two weeks ago? I went to San Antonio to pick up my son for me and my wife. And then meanwhile, I was waiting on my meal. They brought this, walked this gentleman in and sat him down. Was intoxicated. He had too much to drink. Well, it wasn't just a little bit, the law comes in and he wasn't real, you know? Of course, that's probably his food, that probably his plate that he had to use. And probably his drink, that he was drinking. And he was staying in the motel there beside the view. Anyway, the man couldn't figure out why they called him law, called the law. I heard their side that said that he, you know, wouldn't leave, you know? They got a right to do that. I understand that. But the right being is, if you sit there and you give a man a look to drink, that he gets drunk, and then you call the law, why have he been in a car and he got to his car before the law got to him? That's what, that's really what I'm opposing. When I went back to the same restaurant last night, Fred and I didn't have a case, and we had some... Well, I asked the waitresses too. I said, "I know it's sun, you know, I can't have a drink." She said, "No, sir, you can have drinks." I said, "I know that." And I said, "How about if I come back tomorrow night?" She said, "Yeah, you can, you can have a drink with your meal," you know? And I said, "Well, can I have any drinks?" I always thought one or two drinks, you know? Well, there would be progress, you know? And I said, "Well, can I have more than that?" She said, "Look, you can have as many drinks as you want as long as you're not showing up." So they would allow me to sit there and get drunk as long as I didn't show up? Whereas their law act is going to protect the public from that kind of, you know? And I understand that it's up to these 17, 18-year-old kids that's policing this alcohol. And that's really the reason I'm really opposed to this, you know? You know, I don't, you know? And everybody's got their opinion, that's mine, you know? I just don't want to say to somebody, you know, "Go eat, go eat." You know, some of these kids, you know, tips, bring everything to them. You give them up the tips, you know, then you give them three or four liquor drinks and bam, you're, you know, adused to it. When I drank, I'm allowed laughing now anyway. But anyway, I talked a while, but I'm kind of fed up with the fact that I got quiet. It bothered me. I sit there right the way it is right now. I sit there, I got dogged on. Sometimes they didn't say you drive. One time I was at a place and I couldn't hardly see how to drive, get home, got up on the porch and laid on the porch. My wife come out, sat there and lay there in bed, all that, you know? I was sick for three days. But anyway, that's in the past. Just giving you a sample of the alcohol experience that I've had. And I don't drink no more. I live for the Lord. And I don't want to say that out there in front of our church. And I thank you for my time.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, who will be next in the conversation about our liquor license tonight? Want to come forward together?
How are you doing?
Good.
Well, I am a part of the ownership at the Blacktop. We are family-owned and operated. We decided on this to pursue a liquor license just to, not for the money sake, but, I mean, yes, that'd be great, right? But we've really heard our customers and what they're asking for. I understand, you know, the things that he's saying. I just want to let the community know and you all know that no one is allowed to serve alcohol over the age of 21. There always has to be 21 and older present in the building as, so to speak, the bartender, someone who will be making alcoholic drinks. We are allowed to allow 18 and older to serve alcohol. So let's just say we have an 18-year-old who's graduated. They're working for us. They can serve the alcohol to a table, but they are not allowed to make it, which means therefore they are not allowed to make the decisions based on how many drinks. And then also, I want to say, as far as allowing someone to just drink as much as they want, we actually are not allowing that. We are going to have a cap on the amount of drinks. We're still in the work with ABC Liquor of what the amount is, like a good safe amount is. We're not a full-blown bar, a club. That's not what this is. This is if you would like to come have a steak or barbecue or, you know, whatever we serve, that you're allowed to have a drink with your meal. So there's a cap and a limit on drink consumption for not only one person for the table. Will that be helped be facilitated by the waitresses or waiters? Absolutely. But overall, the person who is in charge of making the drinks, which is the 21 or older, will be noted. Okay, table one, table four has had this amount. They are not, there are no more. You'll have to cut them off. You'll have to, you know, tell them, "Thank you for coming." We also have the right to not serve anyone. So if someone comes into our facility who already seems like maybe they have already been drinking or something like that under the influence of any sort, this is, this is not just for alcohol. This is, we have the right to refuse service to anyone. So if you come in, then we have those precautions to... You know, we have rules around that as well, that we are allowed to say, "No, sorry, we don't know what's going on with this person," or that, or we just have the right to refuse service. So I just wanted to let you all know that as well. I do understand that we are close to a church, but the rule is 200 feet and we do exceed 200 feet. And I think as far as business goes and things like that, trying to figure out how I would like to say this. In most places out of our city, I don't know if you go into a restaurant anymore and they don't offer alcohol sale. I think it's very rare. But like I said, we started off with no alcohol and we've really heard our customers and this is something that they're pursuing us about. And I think like any business, you listen to what your customers want, what they say and what they don't want because they're the ones that are coming in to your facility. So I know it's kind of long-winded, but I just wanted to let there be some clarity around that as far as what we are doing as a restaurant and also the rules and regulations that we will have in place if this is passed.
So the person making the drinks monitors the table, is asking for drinks?
Yes, so the waitress or waiter that are, they will have to come to the person. So we will have a board in our, in our area that says, we can keep tabs on all of this. So you can see who at the table, what seat is going to be having drinks, and who at the table or what table, how many they have collectively and separately. So we will know, be able to monitor that. And also, we have rules and regulations in place as well as, you know, if we have to call law enforcement because they're not allowed to leave or something along those lines. But really and truthfully, the cap should never be a dangerous thing for someone to say, "Oh, I have to take your keys." But we do have that in place just in case. I mean, you never know what's going to happen. But as far as rules or regulations on how many of drinks that they will be consuming, we will have cap on that. You can't exceed a certain amount. It's just, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking, I'm just asking, of course.
Yeah, of course, of course.
And you've met all requirements?
We have met all requirements. We have, we're just really waiting on yes or no from the city.
Any further questions? Jordan, anything to add to?
No, sir. I don't, I don't really have anything to add as it relates to this. I will just say I'm very proud of those that show up and voice their concerns about things and engage in peaceful conversation, debate either speaking for or against. On a professional level, that, that means a lot to me, to see people show up and actually engage and debate as opposed to not agreeing with something or agreeing with something and then not speaking up. That's, that's what these public hearings are for. I'm really proud of everyone that showed up to speak for or against it.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anyone else? This is public hearing.
Thanks to people from the pastor of the church. Really was the plan I was speaking, but thanks to all who need to be addressed. As far as the church, our main concern is, of course, the church, the property, and of course, the community. And so we are really not curious to say that we're for it or that we're against it. We know that they're, they've met the requirements as far as being over 200 feet and, of course, looking at the... My thinking is there's really not no difference between 209 and 202. But I know that's the law and that's, you know, we have to go by the law. But I did want to add that the one thing that we will have to do, because I know yesterday the business was doing good and the, there was, our property gives up to the building. And so we get excess parking up there. So I know if it does pass, we'll have to be a little bit more protective over the property and to make sure that nothing is done on our property where we would be reliable for that. So I think it's just important that we was to express that opinion as well. So it would probably, you know, help the church as well as business if they would make sure that the customer's parking is where the restaurant's business is and not on the church's property as well. So, thank you.
We've got time for other comments? Anyone else? Counsel, do you have any questions? Any comments from our legal manager?
No, sir.
All right.
They came up there in the hearing, was it the zoning?
This isn't a zoning issue. This is just a question.
What have you measured for 202?
I wondered the same thing.
Google, Google Maps. They, you can look on Google Maps and then also, I believe, the church measured it and we also measured it. We got 204, they got 202, I believe is what you guys just said. So I just went with what they said, but it's also on Google Maps.
I could look. When it said to measure, from what I understood, it said to measure to the place where you have either clients or fellowship or whatever to the church and then to the building, straight line.
Yes, ma'am. It's from building to building.
Rosie, I met her yesterday and I think what the law is, it's the closest point from all law. Those buildings are not parallel. Church building sits back further and also, so we measured from our front corner, straight line, it costs a straight line, correct? Two, three and a half. That's probably y'all got 204. Then we went to the restaurant's back corner, again, straight line. Let's put it on the halfway of our building, it was 202. That's what we got 202 because it states nearest distance.
Any, any further comments speaking for or against?
The mayor, I think, motion for a vote.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a second? Those in favor? Okay, then we'll come back to our vote here in just a little bit. We're going to enter into the items on the, on the council meeting here to get into our regular meeting. Item one would be a recommendation to approve the minutes of the July 7 city council meeting. We have a motion. Got a motion from Ross. We'll need a second.
Second.
From Sherry. All those in favor approving those minutes?
Thank you.
Item two is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-7-21 for the appointment of elected officials for the upcoming municipal elections. And we, in order to do that resolution, we'll need a motion and second.
I'll make a motion.
Scott made the motion. We'll need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ross. All in favor of owning our election officials?
Angela?
Yes.
Do we need more? Did you say we need more?
I do need a couple more.
So if anybody wants to be an election official on election day, please contact Angela at the city hall.
We have a training's here tomorrow.
Do you want Angela, after the meeting, about to be one of her officials? She'd love some of that, I'm sure.
And you don't need to be related to one of the candidates. I'm just...
Yeah, I'm not being relations to the candidates, please. Item three on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the restaurant retail liquor license application for the Blacktop Restaurant LLC as presented in the public hearing. We're going to vote on that. We'll need a motion and second.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Ross and a second.
I'll second.
A second from Wade. All those in favor of granting that license?
Let me do say this. I do, I know the church is concerned, I really do. But I think if they met all the criteria that we set out, it would be hard to deny other restaurants.
It would be the first.
It would be the first. We haven't done it yet. But I always know this, what Joel said and the pastor said.
We certainly...
Didn't go in that years. I honestly, me, that's on my heart. I don't drink. I've never been to a bar, never been to a restaurant and bought any liquor or beers. There have been a lot of restaurants that serve it. And I think, you know, your customers, y'all be accountable for making sure when people do come, they don't leave. You know, you don't have to monitor that or that can be something that can cause a problem. If that's going to be issued...
Drew Bowe.
Oh, I still, we got two different measurements. Do we get a third party coming here to measure? Make sure, because I heard from front door to front door. You know, and I thought you gentlemen mentioned corner to corner. And I, you know, just make sure we got our touch, bro, before we go.
No, not corner to corner. It's the nearest distance. But you can't measure from our front corner to their front corner. It would be at anything.
Right.
You gotta go straight lines based on how it looks.
He's right. It's, yeah, it's the, it's the closest exterior wall of the closest building in the church or school. And it's, the building is defined as a place for functional activity of the church or school that is carried on.
So they can't just be like a school or something. It's got to be the actual church.
That is actually the reason we took two measurements. Our front corner and we measured it third back corner.
But as I understand it, both parties, both sides are consenting that it's more than two?
I don't disagree with the measurement. I can, you know, that's my mind.
I shot mine with a laser and the laser says 202.
We're not here to dispute at all, I mean, what the restaurant wants to do. We just want to, of course, follow the law. And it's no, no bad, illings, hurtillings, or anything like that. I think we can probably help one another to, to benefit one another, their customers, our people, community and so forth. So that's, we're just here to kind of just keep ears and eyes on everything that's going on.
And there's no sales on Sunday anyway.
Right, right. Like I said, our main concern will be the property because it goes all the way up against...
They go through and I'm on like a log. I did not measure it. It won't take 15 feet.
I'd say less.
It could be less. Or right toward the bottom of that bank off of the building.
Okay. Four, four, yes, and one, no. Item four is a recommendation to approve the purchase and installation of additional lighting on the practice field of the Buddy Hatch River Sports Place slash track that costs $31,500. These lights will be purchased from Musco Sporting Lighting. These will be attached to the existing towers that's over there. There won't be any holes. They'll just be the lighting fixtures. And in order to buy those, we'll need a motion and a second. Got a motion from Sherry.
I'll second.
A second from Scott. All those in favor of this purchase? Thank you. You believe in that, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Item five is a recommendation to approve the installation of a 304 stainless steel pipe at the Hamilton Sewer Plant. We call it wastewater, in this case, it's labeled sewer, by New Way Construction for an installation cost of $50,000. And we need a motion and second to vote on that installation.
Okay.
Got a motion from Ross and a second.
Second.
Second from Wade. All those in favor of that installation?
Mayor, you explain that. We've talked about this over there. The reason with all the stainless, though, there's this kind of decrude.
Yes.
Steel rust.
The gas is produced.
Steel rust, stainless will...
Gas is produced by this waste, rust out the pipes from the inside. And this stainless will not be rusted and it'll last as long as there's a station down there for treatment of the water. And that's the reason we decided to go with the more expensive pipe and fix it once and for all. This afternoon...
I had to be clear. What y'all got on just now was the actual installation, the purchase of the product.
Yeah, the purchase is, the purchase is the pipes on the way. This is for the installation. And we're estimating that the cost, unless they run into obstacles, will be at this range. We'll not pay these people to get through the work. This afternoon, the chief got in touch with me on a situation he's got at City Hall. If you'll come forward, chief, tell us, we might, might amend this agenda for you. Tell us what's going on.
I've been in communication with the mayor about a situation at our police department at Old City Hall. And I just, I want to start off and say we've, we've really battled some issues at the police department this year with, with some actual issues that we're having with our building. Earlier this year, we had to replace some flooring, which was costly. Some water damage happened to the flooring at Old City Hall Police Department. We've had to replace an AC unit in our municipal courtroom. We have seven AC units in that building. That building was City Hall, it was the fire department, it was the police department, the water department. It's kind of in a bunch of different rooms and areas, which requires us to have so many different units to actually cool the building. I addressed the mayor and council several months ago about an AC issue that I was having. I was having an issue with two AC units. We got by with fixing one and we thought that we could hopefully limp the other AC unit until the next budget hit or until it cooled off and then we could, we could take our time on fixing that unit. That's not the case. I blocked my office up this afternoon. It was 77 degrees in there and that's not to count the other four offices. and that's not to count the other four offices, two rooms and a lobby area that was probably hotter in there because the thermostat's actually in my office. I've, I've reached out to three different AC service folks. I reached out to them last week and I've been in communicate, I've been in communication with some for about two weeks, I think we've been battling this issue. And I got quotes back from two, from Nick's Heating and Cooling and from Alexander Heating and Cooling. Got quotes back from those two. This AC unit, when it was installed, some of you may remember, the outside unit is one unit and then the, what do they call it? The carrier unit or handler? Air handler. Was actually installed in the drop ceiling of one of our offices. We came in on a Monday morning with the fresh new floor that we had just replaced had a room full of water from where the AC unit had leaked water down into our floor. And I'm not certain that that wasn't the root cause of the issue when we replaced the floor earlier this year. For lack of better terms, I had a time and quite frankly, it's a bit defeating with, with issues, not only of the building, but department-wide. But I, I do have a couple of quotes here. The lowest quote was for eleven thousand three hundred dollars. And that, that includes the, the outside unit, the handler unit inside and to relocate that unit from above in the ceiling in my lieutenant's office. That's to relocate that into a, a normal area, floor-mounted. And then we'll come back at a later time and try to build a closet around that. At the time, I think when they, when they were in City Hall, that was probably the best solution. But now that we don't have tons of offices and different departments in City Hall, this is the best solution in my opinion to fix this. We can only put a Band-Aid on something so long until we identify the root cause. And I think if identified the root cause, hopefully with this unit, fingers crossed, knock on wood, we don't have to replace another AC unit because that's two just this year. So it's, it's my recommendation to the mayor and council that we, we accept this lowest bid of eleven thousand three hundred dollars to replace that unit and hopefully fix the root cause as opposed to Band-Aid. Who's got it? Nick's Heating and Cooling. They done, they did some work on the last municipal courtroom when we had to replace that unit. They've done some work here at City Hall as well.
In order to approve this, we'll need to make a amendment up to the president.
I make a motion, we amend the agenda and add the impact work of the police department.
Got a motion. I'll play it. Now I like the other motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the word of eleven thousand three hundred dollars to be performed by Nick's Heating and Cooling for the impact work that the county places on.
Got the motion approved.
I'll second.
Got a second from Scott, those in favor making this approval? Thank you, chief.
Appreciate y'all.
Anything else to report on our department?
No, sir. Business as usual.
We getting our drugs, Cochran, this town?
Doing everything we can.
I hear there's improvements in the amount of activity. Proud of that.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
I'm in cadets, we got a school.
We have one, we have one...
One in school.
That's set to graduate the academy next month and we have one that's scheduled to attend the academy next month. We're still one short. We're still accepting applications for certified and uncertified. I would love to see a certified come forward that, that wants to work with a record of guys in that ring. And I'd really entertain that idea. If someone could come forward that's, that's already, they post certified. Apologize for the, for the overtime and stuff we're having to recruit. We're trying to cut it as much as we can, but two in the academy and still looking for one. It's, it's putting strain on us. So I hope, I hope someone applies. If you're looking to make a difference, that's, I think you can make it and add it.
Thank you, chief. Have you got anything else about the election?
No, just that I...
What's the date of, what's the date of the election?
The election is on August the twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth. We'll have our municipal election here in Hamilton. At the recreation center?
Yes.
The voting place will be the recreation center here in Hamilton. Hours will be from...
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven. That's a well-ordered period. That'll give everybody a fair chance to get out and vote. Everyone should exercise that privilege and get out there and vote for your candidate. All right, if there's no further business tonight, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Scott, I will make the motion, we'll need a second. Second, Ross made the second, all in favor of adjournment? Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people